Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our June 12, 2017 City Council Work Session. The time now is 6:04. The item on the agenda is Presentation by Enterprise Regarding Vehicle Fleet Management and Maintenance. Mr. Phelps?
All right, thank you Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Recently, staff has, I actually met Taylor Farber and Billy Bacchus from Enterprise Fleet Management. We always try to explore what the industries are out there to help us in these public-private partnerships because, you know, we explore ways not just throw bodies at problems, but try to be innovative and creative. And these guys came in and gave a presentation for over fleet maintenance and fleet management. And so it was impressive enough that we felt like that we need to bring them in front of you guys to look at what they have to offer. When they are completed with their presentation, the Chief Phillips will be here, as you know, the Police Department Management's Fleet Services, and also City Manager will be here as well. And so between the four of them and the two or three of us, we should be able to answer most of the questions you might have. So with that, I'd kind of like to introduce them if you want to come up. This is Billy Bacchus. And are you going to go on talking?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to him and then I'm going to pass you guys out a summary sheet that they provided.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bacchus, correct?
Yes.
And how do you spell your last name?
It's B-A-C-K-U-S.
Okay, and Taylor?
Farber, yes.
And A. Fantastic, thank you.
Well, thank you all for giving us the time to come and speak with you tonight. Into the microphone? Perfect.
You can remove it if you feel like you need to.
Okay. So just a quick agenda, we're going to go over a little bit of background about Enterprise and also what we're doing with government entities across the board, and then go into the total cost of ownership in regards to owning and maintaining a fleet, and then some of the resources, accounting and technology goes along with it. Feel free throughout this, if you have a question, we can talk about it right then and there. We can also save time then and go over any additional questions that you have. A little background about Enterprise. Enterprise Fleet Management, we're a sister company to Enterprise Holdings. Enterprise Holdings owns companies like Alamo, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, National, and there's a long list underneath that. We're still a privately-held company owned by the Taylor family. And today, we manage one of the largest fleets in the world, just under 2 million vehicles. We're the largest purchaser and seller of vehicles in the world. And why that matters is that we have skin in the game. And if you look at all the rented car vehicles that we have in our fleet, they have to make sure that they have effective fleet management and understand how to buy vehicles, how long to hold on to them for, at what point do they get rid of them, how do they sell them, how they maintain them and fuel them, in order to run the most efficient fleet possible. So there's a lot of data and technology and information we have that we're able to pass on to our clients. So Enterprise Fleet Management, we're all across North America. The big part about all the different local offices that we have is that we establish local relationships with our clients. So I'll talk a little bit about the accounting later, but we provide you a local account manager that meets with you on a quarterly basis to really understand the goals and needs of the city and helps align the fleet plan with the city's plan. And when it comes to fleet management, we cover every single area from acquisition to resale and everything in between. So the green dots are mostly on the capital side, acquisition, how you fund the vehicles, resale. Then the red is the operational side, maintenance and fuel. Then from any type of administrative, from aftermarket, license tag, title, things like that. And then in the yellow is more on the safety proportion, from driver's safety, safety of the vehicles, telematics. So by having every single one of these aspects, we're able to tailor a plan to our clients' needs. So whatever makes sense, and it could be by department, we have a program or solution for that. Here's a list of some of the different entities we work with in Texas, from cities to counties, school districts to universities, all different types of government entities. And even though they are different types of entities, they all have very similar struggles, similar issues, similar capital and operating budgets and how they operate. And so we're able to take a lot of the best practices, we're able to see what a lot of the challenges are in these industries, and help with best practices and strategies for our clients as well. So these are just a few testimonials from some of our clients in the government sector, whether it's talking about the impact we made on their capital budget, the impact on the safety of the vehicles for their employees, or just having other data and technology to help them run a more efficient fleet and make informed decisions. That's a big part about what we do. So across the board, government entities, whether it's a city, county, school district, everyone's tasked to do more with less. It's not even more of the same, it's more with less. And there's constant struggles, whether it's something going on with pension or health insurance, just future liabilities. There's a lot of issues which, whether it's unfunded or underfunded state mandates, things they put in place that you have to be more efficient with the assets or procedures that you have in place. And it just so happens that your fleet of vehicles is one significant area of opportunity. So when we look at the typical fleet profile across the board, the chart to the right is actually from the state of Texas. Every year they release, it's called the State of the Fleet, and there's a lot of statistics and averages on there. The average age of the vehicles that they have data on is about nine years. And when you look at your city and your life cycle, you're holding on to vehicles for about 15.5 years. So you have a significantly aged fleet today, but it's also similar to a lot of government entities. We also see typically low annual mileage, and you guys are right around that 6,000-mile mark. And then we see multiple departments have multiple fleet plans. And capital usually drives what happens. So what I mean is, everybody puts in their request with, here's what we need, capital budget says, here's what we have, and you've got to make it work. And that's what we see over and over again. And a lot of decisions are based off that capital budget. And it can make an impact on which way you go with it. So we always start with the financial side. Total cost of ownership is from the moment you buy a vehicle to the moment you sell it. Now, this example is just for a pickup truck over a 10-year period of time, but the point of this is to show you an example of where the dollars go when you own and operate a vehicle. Because when you think total cost of ownership, one of the first things that pops in everyone's head is, what did we pay for the vehicle? What's the price? But what we know, that usually counts from 20, maybe 40% of your total cost of ownership, whereas your operating side, that could be 60% or more of your total cost of ownership. So the goal is not to look at them separate, but to look at them as one piece of the pie and put a plan in place to reduce your total cost of ownership. Now, this is just on one single vehicle. When you look at your entire fleet, we actually pulled the numbers straight from your budgets and your past financials, and from what your capital expenditures was, you see on the top left, and then significant budget items, so that's maintenance, fuel, parts, and then to the right, personnel from the Fleet Services Department. When we combine those three main categories across all vehicles and everything you have under the Fleet Services Department, it's about 1.7 million. Now, it looks very similar to that single vehicle you looked at because you have about 35% in the capital side. And on the operating side, that represents about 65%, which again is what we constantly see. But if you need to look for different ways and opportunities to reduce costs, the first thing we typically see that slash is the capital budget. So in here, it has 622,000. So if you want to save money, you know what, this year we're only going to spend $300,000. So we're going to save 300 grand on the capital side and not acquire more vehicles. It's typically the number-one solution. But when you do that, what you're really saying is, we're not going to replace that many vehicles this year, which means we're going to hold on to vehicles longer. And when you hold on to vehicles longer, they increase in age, increase in mileage, increase in maintenance costs, increase in fuel costs, and you lose resale every year. So by slashing your capital, you actually increase your operating costs and increase your overall total cost of ownership. So it's counterproductive. So you can't go in and just slash your operating budget, because if you do that, you'll get six months through the year, and you can't just park the vehicles, right? You've still got to fuel them and maintain them. So the only way to do that is to lower the average age of your fleet. So instead of a cycle where you are today at 15.5 years, you have to reduce that age so you can reduce the operating costs. The only way to reduce the average age of your fleet is to replace it more frequently, which means you have to acquire more vehicles. And that sounds backwards, right? The way that you save money is to buy more vehicles. But one of the main things that's missing on that capital side is the impact of resale. So to show you an example, just using third-party information, here's a 2017 Silverado 1500. If you look up that vehicle right on GM's website, the MSRP price is $37,225. That's what the retail public world sees. Because you're a government entity, you have phenomenal buying power, the best there is. So that exact vehicle on the Texas state contract, you could buy for $24,658. So right off the bat, compared to the retail world, that's a $13,000 difference. But again, it's usually the buy-and-hold mentality, and we're going to use every bit of that vehicle. But when you take into consideration the impact of resale, that's when things start to change. So again, using third-party information, I pulled results from Mannheim Auction, which is one of the largest vehicle auctions in the country. And this exact vehicle, it's two years old, the average odometer was about 17,500, average sales price is just under $23,000, which means when you compare it to what you bought it for, that's $1700 in capital outlay. That same exact vehicle that's a year old, the odometer was a little bit higher than all the vehicles sold, average sales price is over $26,000, which means you actually turned a profit of 1700. If you look at, we pulled this picture right off your budget, and it shows since 2014 how much has increased in the amount of repairs that you're doing to your fleet. So in 2014, you had 2,000 repairs done, and for 2017, it's almost double. And that again is a telltale sign that you're holding on to vehicles for a long time, and you're spending a lot more service and hours on maintaining to keep up with that fleet. So as you can imagine, as the amount of unscheduled repairs continue to increase, so do your costs along with it. When we look at fuel economy, one of the great parts about new vehicles is that the government implements CAFE standards, and they need the manufacturers to increase fuel efficiency of their vehicles. So if you look at this F-150, in 1997, the average miles per gallon was 14 vehicles, or 14 miles per gallon for the new vehicles produced. Now, they've done a lot of changes with the new aluminum body. As of 2017, the combined miles per gallon was 21. That's a 50% increase. You look at the same thing with the sedan, it was, in 1997, it was 20 miles per gallon. Fast forward today, that's 27. So we know that vehicles are getting more fuel efficient as time goes on. But the other part is, when you hold on to a vehicle, it has what's called fuel degradation, and it loses fuel economy the longer you hold on to it. So that pickup truck might have started at 15 miles per gallon, but fast forward, now it's down to 13, 12, 10 miles per gallon. So you have dual effects of more fuel-efficient vehicles and fuel degradation. So if you hold on to vehicles for longer and longer, you're losing fuel efficiency. The next part is looking at safety. Vehicles are constantly changing, and it's even more rapid over the past few years. About the amount of safety features and testings and options, these are when items became standard on vehicles. So in 2007, front and side crash tests, anti-lock brakes, airbags. And when you look at your current fleet today, you have 57 vehicles that are older, 2007 are older. So they're lacking everything that's on this list. In 2012, electronic stability control, lane departure, rear videos, that's when they started coming out and testing for everything. And electronic stability control, if you watch videos on that, the way that vehicles can turn in just a simple rainfall is a drastic difference in radius, which could prevent an accident or not. There's 110 vehicles in your fleet that are 2012 or older. So you can see it just another impact of cycling at the right time and lowering the average age is you're going to have your employees in more safer vehicles. Review your fleet every single year. They do an annual client review to identify where exactly you've reduced your costs and what areas, and what opportunities are moving forward. But they also have two additional members on their team, they're two different fleet coordinators. They help with a lot of administrative duties from tag, title, registration, aftermarket on the vehicles, logos, anything you need help with, we'll take care of. From a maintenance perspective, we have a couple of different programs, but they help manage the maintenance when the vehicles are outsourced. So we just did a snapshot, a radius of around Halton City, and just around this area, there's 153 maintenance and repair locations. You can choose where you want to take your vehicles, but our goal is that you stay within the city so that those businesses within the city can increase their revenues, but allows you to take your vehicle to any one of those locations. But everything is tracked and reviewed and monitored by our National Service Department. So they take a vehicle into the shop, and the mechanic can't do any work on the vehicle until they call in and get approval from our National Service Department. And so they might say it's 10 hours' worth of work and $1,000, and we're going to say that's a five-hour job, and it's only $250. What's the difference here? So we always make sure, whether it's a government client, or it's heating and cooling, or oil and gas, downtime matters to everybody. So we want to make sure the vehicles are in and out as fast as possible at the lowest possible price. From a fuel perspective, today you guys have onsite fuel tanks that you fuel up from. And just looking at costs, on average, it's about $2,200 a year just to maintain that fuel tank. So what a lot of our clients have done is actually outsource and use local fuel stations and use a fuel card to help track everything. So the fuel card and the maintenance card stay within the vehicle so we can help track and monitor the costs on a per-vehicle basis. So you still have security with it, they have to enter in their PIN number so you know exactly who fuels up, and they also have to enter in the odometer of the vehicle as well. So we can always track on what the monthly, weekly, annual mileage is of their vehicle. We can identify miles per gallon, which helps us identify if something's wrong with the engine. You know, if it's supposed to be getting 18 miles per gallon, it's only getting 12, you know that's a key sign that something's wrong with the engine, or maybe there's misuse. So again, it's a lot of data tracking to help to use for our analysis, and you can see exactly where your costs are going. Also, for anybody that has a smartphone, that's employee, there's a mobile app so you can identify the closest maintenance facility, fuel card station. You can see a lot of things that have to do with the vehicle. There's also roadside assistance that comes with this, so anywhere they are, if something happens, even if you're traveling down for a conference in Austin, and the vehicle's broken down halfway there, roadside assistance is there, it's 24/7, and they're immediately taken care of. So all that information's included right there in the mobile app. And then part of the technology I talked about earlier is having close to 2 million vehicles, we have more data than we ever need, and there's a lot of technology that we have to help analyze not only what your costs are today, but also for future vehicles for replacement. So again, we're not just looking at what's the lowest price, we're looking at lowest cost of ownership. So what we'll do is, we'll take a type of vehicle that you need, let's say a half-ton pickup truck, and we'll compare all manufacturers. And we're going to look at what's the purchase price, but also what does the maintenance and fuel costs look like? Most importantly, what's resale look like at the end as well? And then we compare all these, and we present to you what's the lowest cost of ownership, whether on a monthly holding cost or cents per mile, so you can help make the best decision on what's going to save you the most money. So we're looking at this every single year. We do a fleet analysis meeting where we review your current costs today, and which vehicles we recommend on replacing, and then it's completely up to you what you decide to do moving forward. We're just there to present the data, the analytics, and the recommendations. Everything from the maintenance, fuel program, your entire fleet, is uploaded into this mobile dashboard, which anybody in the city can have access to, and it allows you to see at a glance everything associated with your fleet. You can see fuel costs per vehicle or on a monthly basis, you can see maintenance costs, you can see mileage, everything is on there. Everything that's on this dashboard, you could export out to Excel, so if you have an internal meeting, you can review all the information. The goal is for you not to look at it too much because you have your local account team to help analyze that data, but it's there for you whenever you need it. And then, as I mentioned, one of the things your account manager does every year is an annual client review. So the more data that we have, we can show comparisons of, here was your total cost last year versus this year, and here's where we're able to reduce your cost. And they went to different funding mechanisms so they could acquire more vehicles, but for less capital outlay. And then because they were getting rid of some of the oldest vehicles in their fleet, they saw a drastic drop in both maintenance and fuel expenditures that they were paying before. So not only is it a good thing for everyone to see of, you know, how is it performing, where are we saving money, how are we doing, but it's also our report card as well, because we do our analysis, we look at what your cost savings should be year-over-year, and the best part about a fleet is, it's all data, it's all numbers. So you can easily see, here's what our costs were before, here's where they are today, and this has been a great impact to the city. So with that, everyone got one of the packets of fleet synopsis? So this has some details on your fleet. If you look at the third page in, just talks about some of the things that we covered today in regards to how old your vehicles are, the life cycle, things like that. But if you look at page four, that's when we start to analyze the fleet. Everyone on this page? So at the top, this is not including the police vehicles, this is separate, but there's 32 vehicles that are over 10 years old, which we've already talked about multiple times, but you do have an aged fleet. And then the other part is, you see, based on the model years, it gives us a good idea of how many you acquire each year, and you can see that the ebbs and flows year-to-year. And when you're paying cash too, that's substantial capital outlay, or it's nothing at all. And if you take a look at your operating costs, you'll see that when you acquire more vehicles, you should see it drop the next year, and vice versa. But the way your structure's been, it's still an aged fleet, and you're holding on to it for a long time. So underneath that, we have a fleet profile. So what we did is take your fleet list and break it down into all the different categories, from a compact sedan all the way down to a one-and-a-half-ton cab chassis, how many vehicles are in each category, the average age, and the average annual mileage. And then to the right of that, the fleet replacement schedule, you'll see first year in 2017, we're looking at the oldest vehicles with the highest mileage of replacing first, but we start to put together a five-year plan to get your entire fleet cycled out. The last column on there says "underutilized." Those are vehicles that are driving less than 2,500 miles a year, and those are usually what we identify as underutilized, maybe spare vehicles. And any opportunity you can get rid of vehicles is cost savings right there. A lot of times, we see cities like yourself have those types because with an aged fleet, you need spares because you might have a truck down in the shop for a week. So what's the best thing to do? Pick up one of the spare trucks that we have. So the pages that follow is looking over the next 10 years of what the replacement of your entire fleet looks like. So that yellow bar up top is looking at your average cost for these vehicles. So if you see up top in the yellow bar, the fleet size is 67. On average, you get about four-and-a-half vehicles a year. And if you look under "purchased," it says 113,913. Based on your average vehicle price, that's your average capital outlay for this portion of the fleet. And then using your internal data, it's about 162,000 in maintenance, about 74,000 in fuel, so your total fleet expenditure is about 350,000. Now, the first line below that is when we start to implement the fleet plan and start replacing vehicles. So that first year, we're looking at replacing 19 vehicles, and we're doing a different funding mechanism in this analysis, which allows you to acquire, we're going from four vehicles at 114,000 up to about 20 vehicles for about 92,000 in capital outlay. And then your maintenance is significantly going to drop because you're getting rid of the oldest vehicles with the highest maintenance costs. Same thing with fuel. So your first-year cost should drop down to around 275,000. And we're going to do that over the next five years until your entire fleet is cycled out. And then we want to show you Phase Two, which is the second cycle. So over 10 years, your fleet is cycled out twice. And over those 10 years, should be somewhere around 700,000 in savings to the city. But one of the key things that's missing in this is the equity from resale. So whenever we sell vehicles for our clients, or you sell them on your own, you get that profit from resale. So that chart down below, the current fleet equity analysis, is if we're replacing 19 vehicles, we know about average costs, looking at your fleet today is about 1,700, so that's 32,000 that you'd get back to the city. So most of our clients use that as kind of their internal replacement fund, and they use that profit from resale to offset their capital outlay. And they use that, that profit from resale to offset their capital outlay. So over the next five years of replacements, that's about two hundred and ninety thousand. And when you combine the both of those, it's a little over a million dollars over the next ten years. Any questions on this analysis? Or any questions in general?
Thank you, Mr. Backus. Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question?
Mr. Backus, a couple of things. Like to spend a little more time on this, but in the acquisition portion you'd made mention about y'all's. Is most of the buying power done through y'all or is it still maintained since we're able to buy through the county and through the state pool? Is that how y'all typically do it with some of the other entities that y'all work with?
No, actually what we do is you still use your buying power. But I would say ninety-five percent of the time, we go directly to the manufacturer and bypass the dealers.
So, but when you say bypass the dealers, we have a state like a motor.
Yep.
A county that we're able to buy through and it gives us volume buying power. With all the, the cities that are, I guess, most of TML cities, but it's, you know, it's a buying opportunity for us that, that allows us to, you know, kinda have that volume buying. Ability. Is, is that how your other entities do it or are they just, like you say, they go straight to Chevrolet or Ford or Dodge?
Yeah, we go straight to the manufacturer. Now, if, in certain circumstances.
Ability where y'all can make the connection because y'all have that, you know, largest fleet, fleet company in the, in the world?
Yep, and what we do is we basically have a bidding war between the manufacturers versus going through the dealers. And so we'll put out the vehicles and they'll come back with their pricing. And your pricing is the invoice of the vehicle minus your government incentives. So if GM has eleven thousand dollar incentive on a, on a Chevy Silverado. That's your cost is the invoice minus that incentive. Now, if you need a vehicle out of stock, maybe it got in an accident or something happened and you need a little bit quicker versus factory ordering through the manufacturer. Then we can go through a dealer and go through one of the government buys that you have established. It's not always the most cost effective because dealers have to make their, their profit somewhere. And so that's why we go directly through the manufacturers because what the pricing is is exactly what you get. There's no negotiation.
What have you, you've obviously seen some of the, you know, some of the pricing that, some of the other entities that you already have under contract. What is the comparison of what they're purchasing from y'all, say a Chevrolet pickup? Prior to them using y'all versus after they've used y'all?
Mm-hmm. So when we partner with a government entity. They partner us for fleet management. Everything we do, we basically act on your behalf. So when we submit a bid for acquisition, it's Halton City placing a bid for the vehicles to the manufacturers. And the incentives that you get are specific to your city. So technically, it's not our buy. It's what you're getting from the manufacturer. And they're, they're mostly ballparked to what you see. It's hard to compare because when you order from the manufacturer, you build the vehicle exactly how you want it. Spec for spec, we want a factory order as much options as possible because it's most cost effective. You pick the color, you pick everything on that vehicle. Where a lot of time you're kind of at whatever the dealers have. It may not be exactly what you need. And so then you'd have to compare when they put those options on or the aftermarket or things like that. What's, then what's our cost? So that's one of the benefits of going directly through the manufacturers. You get exactly how you want it.
Okay. Still need to look into that a little more in depth, but where is your point of service for someone like us? I mean, you know, currently we, we have our fleet department and we take, take them to the shop here within our city. Does, does, do your numbers a lot for downtime for, I mean, you know, do we have to, where do we take them for, for repair and service?
Yep, so that's why I put that map up before where there is, just showed all the different locations around Halton City. Let's go back to that. So that's just around the city location here. Again, one of the benefits about having a, a lower age fleet than you do today is your downtime by default is gonna be lower. So if you're going on average six, six thousand miles a year. You might bring that vehicle in the shop once and it's for oil change. So for those newer vehicles, downtime isn't gonna be that much of an issue at all. Now, if you look at your fleet today, if it doesn't make sense to outsource all your vehicles, you can still maintain them in-house. Again, with all the programs we have, it's tailored to our clients. So you might just wanna outsource all the new vehicles that are coming in your fleet, but keep maintaining the old ones until everything gets cycled out. Whatever you wanna do, that's fine. You could outsource everything. You could outsource nothing on the maintenance side. It's completely up to you.
Okay. And so I see Halton City in the dead center, but what would be our, I mean. Is, say the one to the bottom left of Halton City there, is that, where, where is that? Do you, do you know by chance?
I don't know exactly. I mean, we could, we could send you more detailed lists of where the shops are and the locations.
But they're private shops that, that are there or they're owned by y'all as enterprise?
No, they're private shops. Yeah, so it's, it's from national ones to like a Goodyear, Jiffy Lube, things like that. To local mom and pop shops.
Okay. And y'all are contracted through them?
In order for them to be on our program, they have to basically be awarded to be on that program. So they gotta have repair labor rates and everything else in line with the city or county, everything else around it. Cost for parts, everything else. So it's not just our fleet clients, which there's a lot that's around. But also a lot of our maintenance done on the rental side is through these shops as well. So there's a large volume of work that these shops get. And so in order to stay on one of our, our vendor lists, they have to make sure that the vehicles are in and out and are done at a low cost.
Okay. One last question is, how, how is y'all's compensation plan? How, how do you derive that?
So it's actually built right into the tenure model and the lease amount. So the two main ways we make our money is interest and management fee. So if you decide to go and use, whether it's financing or different funding mechanisms. We provide the funding for you and so we would make money off the interest. If you pay cash for vehicles like you do today, obviously there's no interest rate with that. But the main way we always make our money is a fixed management fee that's built into all new vehicles that are in your fleet. And so that is what includes your accounting, the technology. A lot of what I talked about today is included in that fixed management fee. So even though we'll manage your whole fleet from day one, that management fee is only included on the new vehicles that are cycled in your fleet. So we really have to earn your trust and loyalty over the next four or five years. Until we have a management fee associated with all vehicles.
Okay, and that's a negotiated fee then, right?
It's, it's typically either pre-negotiated if you go through like tips or one of the co-ops. Which most of the government entities do, or either do that or you go through your own RFP process. Where, you know, we submit our, our fixed pricing for interest and management fee. So you know exactly what that is.
Okay, and hypothetically, I mean, and this, this may not be something you can answer or not, but it, just hypothetically, we were. Buying to the program and, and do it over the next five years. Is there a guarantee that the numbers will come back? And that we'll recognize savings? If not, does that come out of part of y'all's, you know, y'all's fixed cost or?
It does not because we can't, we can't control what you do with the vehicles. So if you decide that you wanna continue to hold vehicles for fifteen point five years. You're not gonna see a drastic change in maintenance or fuel. And so we can't force you to replace a certain amount of vehicles. We can't. You know, even if we look at a five-year holding period, we could get to five years. It's your vehicle, you could say we wanna hold on to it for another ten, for fifteen years.
I was just saying, based on the, based on that, I mean, it'd be difficult. You'd, you'd need probably a minimum of three years to ever realize. Start realizing where you were at, you know, kind of year in, year out. But say year four or five, if you're on this program and you're doing it, you're replacing vehicles. But you're not experiencing savings that, you know, that are supposed to be there. I just didn't know if there was some kind of built-in guarantee that it would, you know?
There's not.
Okay.
Um, there's also no long-term contract that you're locked into. So there isn't a three, four, or five-year contract. Literally after twelve months, you could go through your first annual client review. And you don't wanna move forward with the partnership, you can be completely done with that. You don't have to replace vehicles through us for future orders. And whatever vehicles you have, like say you started with a nineteen. You can either buy out what the book value is because you've been depreciating them. Or if you paid cash, you don't owe anything anyways and you can part ways. So we're very transparent with what our costs are. And you know exactly what your undepreciated book value is at all times. And there's nothing that forces you to a long-term relationship with us.
Okay. That's all that, Mr. Murr. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Any other questions for Mr. Backus from the council? Dr. Strong?
I want to understand a little bit more. This program mean enterprise will take over control, like if, if our city agreed to go with enterprise, right? You control from buying, maintaining, everything, right?
We help put those programs in place for you to use, yes.
Only one thing I concern about this many location, have you been, deal with them in the past?
Yes, these are all, that's a hundred and fifty-three maintenance and repair locations that are on our program.
And how do you know all of the shop is qualified to knock, I don't say cheating, you know, like overpry, overcharge? The service that knock in there, how do you monitor it?
So they can't perform any of the work that's done on the vehicles until we approve it. And so if their labor rate, their parts rate, if anything is out of line.
Do they, when we bring vehicle, we say, okay, they have red light or yellow light, maintenance, whatever. Do they diagnose the vehicle and bring the sheet to you or to us, say, hey, this need to be repaired, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or, okay?
Yep, and so every time they call in, they're connected to ASC certified technician. So these are all mechanics. They're now working for us. And so they understand what's going on with the vehicles. And most of the shops are on a program, are on a, a program called Auto Integrate, so it's all digital anyways. But once we get the VIN number of the vehicle, we'll see the entire history. So a lot of times they make their money from overselling or trying to do services that aren't needed. And so we'll identify that. Hey, this work was done twenty-five hundred miles ago. It does not need to be performed.
I mean, so far it's all good, but I think we need more detail and find out how they operate in another city. Before we can, you know, deeply involve in this one and thank you for your answers, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Strong. Councilmember Nunn?
Hi. So warranty on these vehicles would be normally what? Three, three years?
Usually on the, on the fleet side, it could be three to five years. And anywhere from sixty to a hundred thousand miles depending on manufacturer type of vehicle.
Okay, and is that an upfront cost if we wanna go five years? I mean, obviously the savings would be there if we, if we're still under warranty.
It's, no, it's, it's actually whatever the manufacturer offers.
Okay.
So if, if Ram offers five years, a hundred thousand mile warranty, that's exactly what you get.
Okay.
So that's one of the things they offer on a lot of their trucks on the, on the fleet or government side. So you automatically get that. It's not an extra charge.
Okay, and then tires would be included in this, in the maintenance?
Yep, so two of the programs we have, the full maintenance program is a fixed and budgeted one that our clients can do. So if we know a vehicle, if you're holding it for, say, five years and it's going six thousand miles a year. We can pretty much tell you down to the penny what that vehicle's gonna cost. And we take that amount, we divide it out by sixty months, whatever the holding period is. So you pay that fixed budget amount and that completely removes you from the maintenance game. You don't have to worry about receiving phone calls for maintenance or invoices. It's just fix and budget. So we'll, if, if it's only going six thousand miles a year and you're holding it for five years, it's thirty thousand miles. So we might recommend not to include brakes and tires because we'll probably sell it before you even have to do it. If you look at Enterprise Holdings, what they do with their rental fleet. They typically hold on to vehicles between twelve and eighteen months and they sell them before they ever have to do brakes and tires. So last year, Enterprise sold just over one point one million vehicles. And most people think Enterprise rent a car, they make their money from renting vehicles. Our highest revenue source is resale internally. So again, that's why we place that emphasis for our clients because we know how much of an impact that is. And if you don't have to do brakes and tires on a lot of your vehicles that are low mileage, that's substantial cost savings.
Okay, all right. Well, I really like the fuel card system. I think that really helps as far as keeping. You know, the maintenance on each individual vehicle. I think that's a real plus. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council for Mr. Backus? Well, question that I have, one question. Now. Would it be your recommendation that we, we put our fleet on this? With the exception of our patrol cars because they are different colors? Everything else is just white?
No, well, we actually did a, a separate one for that. The reason why we kept it separate is because it's a completely different plan and structure. Because it, they're a lot higher mileage. In fact, yours is averaging between twenty and thirty thousand miles a year. And then also there's such a large variance in the aftermarket cost of those vehicles. So based on mileage, it might make sense to cycle after two years, but you put forty thousand dollars worth of aftermarket on a Tahoe. And our analysis will show it probably makes sense for four or five years. And so it's, it's such a different fleet, that's a different analysis and, and everything else with that. So it would be both those departments, a white fleet and what we call emergency response vehicles. We just kept them separate out of this one.
What has been your, your experience with vehicles that have been in our public works, or in public works in general? Because that's, those trucks tend to take, you know, more abuse than the average code enforcement vehicle.
Yep. So that's, that's a question we always get. We're used to that and we understand it. So the, a couple of different things. One, we have a, a in-house fleet strategy manager. That works with your accounting to evaluate the equity that's in your fleet. So if we need to drive twenty minutes to come take a look at the twenty trucks that we're probably recommending cycling out. We have a good idea of what they'll yield in the marketplace. The second part is outside of government. Some of the ones I mentioned before, general contractors. Whether it's Belfour BD or any type of oil and gas, heating and cooling companies. Nobody takes good care of their vehicles. They really don't. So they're beat up. There's dings, there's hail damage. There's a lot of things that are wrong with them. So that's why, for one thing, we're always conservative for what we think we could get in the marketplace. Obviously, the more we get goes back to our clients. But we do, we never assume they're in perfect condition or honestly even average. We always seem, um, looking a little bit below average because we know the, the condition of them.
Okay. Answer my questions. Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Backus. That was one of the question. You kinda hit on it there. I was kinda, I apologize for talking a little bit with the city manager about it. But specialty, I guess that's kinda what, and you hit it with, with the PD units. Say like your Parks and Recreation, we have some vehicles that have dump beds and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Is it's been y'all's experience though that like on those that you say an F-five fifty with a, with a dump bed on it? Is that a type of vehicle though that you would typically keep a little longer because it's, it's kinda specked out or tooled out for a certain application? And it, I wouldn't see where you could come out on that. I mean, is it, but am I thinking correctly? That y'all kinda go through there and analyze it and say this one?
Yep.
You really?
Yeah, so for most of your fleet, even though we're looking at, um, in the beginning, just a five-year replacing plan. If you have some sedans or other vehicles, we might, as we go along this process, it might make sense to cycle after two or three years. You know, what's going on in the marketplace, things like that. For those larger vehicles, you got an F-six fifty with a stake body on the back. Typically, we see about five years. If it's shorter, it might be because we're gonna cycle out the vehicle. And if it's the same type of body, we can put that stake body on the next vehicle.
Okay.
Or we might recommend that, hey, you need to hold on to this for six years or so. So because just like the police vehicles, they have a lot of aftermarket in it. There's high cost for that and it depreciates quick, whether it's a stake body, a crane, all different types.
Dump beds and all that. I, I just know that we've used to, we, 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 um, over the last probably ten years or so. There's been a pretty good effort on trying to do some things with a little custom, more customization for what. a little custom, more customization for what the application that we're using for each department. And then, you know, our fleet's gotten a little better as far as trying to assist our, you know, say like the little dump beds for the Park Department and, and Public Works and all some vehicles that make sense. So I just was trying to see if y'all on a case-by-case basis, look at it.
It is.
And apply it, okay.
So you'll, you'll probably see a lot of vehicles will end up having different types of plans because of usage, annual mileage, resale value, aftermarket.
Well, and I just kind of took it earlier that it was kind of across-the-board deal and that's not really what y'all are saying. It's, it's more on each, each vehicle or each application kind of merits its own.
Yep, yeah, this is always basically our starting point because you're going to go from fifteen years down to five years. Um, and if I showed you guys, if you cycled out your whole fleet after two years, that's not going to make sense. But five years is a good starting point and most of our clients request a ten-year outlook. So it's just a great starting point. And then from there, you know, if it makes sense for the city to partner with us and move forward with the plan, that's where we get a little more detailed on, all right, this one's a three-year cycle, this one's six, this one's five. And we can start to have more specific plans per departments and vehicles.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, Councilmember Nun.
Thank you. Um, I'm assuming, and Rex or Keith, you may help me with this, that we do this, we do a lot of this analysis in-house for our maintenance. Um, what would the cost savings approximately as, as far as administrative?
We would, we would save money right off the bat because we're, um, we're basically replacing an inefficient fleet operation with an efficient one. Um, so we've got employees now, for example, we've only got one mechanic that's certified to work on most of the, uh, smaller vehicles that we have. That's it. Nobody else has a certification. It's hard to, not only is it hard to attract that kind of employee, it's hard to retain that kind of employee. Um, the way that we're doing fleet maintenance currently and for the past eight years I've been here is extremely inefficient. Um, we've got a lot of, uh, employees that work in fleet, but it's not, we're not efficient. We outsource about three hundred thousand dollars a year. So we're already taking that much out of the city or to other places to work on. So that's not going to be that drastic of a change. So literally, we're going to see savings right off the bat. Not only is it going to make us a lot more efficient, it's going to save us a lot of money, right off the bat. I mean, um, because you're reducing, uh, an inefficient department with somebody who's, you know, a public-private partnership that's going to be a lot more efficient for us.
Thank you. It sounds like it to me, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nun. Are there any, any other questions, uh, from the council for Mr. Backus? Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Lang, so, uh, I know this was just a presentation, but what information or what direction do you need from the council regarding?
I think if you're interested in pursuing this, what we'll do is we'll, um, we'll work it into the budget process this year. And we'll get you some numbers and, and, uh, kind of narrow down exactly what it's going to cost. Um, we've, we just had our fleet manager retire. So that's, you know, a-again, it goes back, that's, that's a position that we won't have to replace if we're going to, if we're going to go with them. But I think if you, if the council gives me direction that you're interested in this, then we'll make it part of the budget process.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Fowler.
I definitely have an interest in looking at it, Mr. Backus. If I could, could I get a card so if I had some questions?
Okay, so Councilmember Fowler is interested in, is anybody have any opposition to this being brought up during the budget, uh, sessions? And we'll start those, is it, uh, about August, July, July? So we'll further discuss this and go more in-depth in it in July? Okay, so be it. Uh, with that being said, I'll now close the workshop at six fifty-seven and we will reconvene back into public meeting or start our public council meeting at, uh, seven o'clock in three minutes. Councilmembers, if you would please, start making your way towards the dais. Councilmember Grow and Watson. Bob, you want to sign in? You ready? Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our June twelfth, two thousand and seventeen city council meeting. The time now is seven oh four. Uh, if you would, please, uh, rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance to my councilmember, Janine Nun.
Thank you, let's pray. Heavenly Father, today I would like to give thanks for this beautiful weather today, the recent soaking rains, our dedicated community, our volunteers, our police and our fire departments, our city leaders and staff, our mayor and our city council, this beautiful state of Texas and our free country. Lord, thank you for our freedom and our forefathers that fought for our democracy. Please watch over our soldiers protecting this freedom and bless our veterans that fought and died that we may live in, uh, the country that we, in a free country where we have elections and runoff elections for our leaders. Please give this council wisdom to make the right decisions for our citizens and the continued growth of our community. Lord, I ask that you protect our first responders, keep them safe. I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Nun. Uh, next on the agenda is our announcements and events by our city secretary, Art Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. In the way of public announcements for June twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, with the public library, Storytime, Super Science Saturdays, bilingual storytime and culinary and cookies for grownups and family movie night activities are all listed on the library's website for their date and times. For the summer reading program, which will be held five days a week, are the following. Game On is a Y gaming fun that is held on Tuesdays and Thursdays at four P.M. Teen Trivia is June thirtieth at four P.M. with Disney as the theme. Board Games is the, uh, the library's game. You can play your games or, or, or play the library's and it's on Tuesdays at two P.M. Kid Craft Day is Wednesdays at two P.M. On July fourteenth, they'll be doing a craft on the space shuttle and on the twenty-first, they do a necktie snake. Reading Buddies is a program to read to one of our, our youth volunteers, uh, Thursday at two P.M. Special Guest Fridays will be held each Friday at two P.M. Starting in July, July sixteenth will be Willie Welch, who is a musician singer. And on July twenty-third, Chicken Dog Circus, which is a circus act with rescue dogs. The Ladies Night Out will be held Saturday, August twelfth at, from five thirty to nine thirty P.M. at the library. And you can purchase tickets by June seventeenth and the price is only thirty-nine dollars, but after June seventeenth, the price is forty-five. In the way of community projects, event volunteers are needed for the Northeast Tarrant Chamber of Commerce Family Forest Celebration and Fireworks Show on Tuesday, July fourth. The shifts are just two hours and you will receive an event tee-shirt, VIP parking and access to the hospitality room with free drinks and refreshments. And more information can be found on the city website. The June and July Crossroads paper is now available in print and online to see what is happening in Halton City. Public Works has issued a, a message for the citizens in that the railroad crossing across Halton Road between Glenview Drive and Stanley Keller Road is being double-tracked. Traffic conditions for motors will change between mid-June through mid-August and the following changes are anticipated. June twelfth, both northbound and southbound Halton Road traffic will be moved to the east side of Halton Road. June fourteenth through the July thirteenth, only northbound Halton Road traffic is permitted across the railroad tracks. Southbound through traffic will be rerouted at Glenview Drive and the local traffic to include Liberty, excuse me, to include Liberty carton, nurse assist, et cetera, will be allowed southbound on Halton Road past Glenview. However, not across the railroad tracks. July fourteenth, uh, through July twenty-second, Halton Road at railroad tracks, the railroad tracks located between Stanley Keller Road and Glenview Drive, the intersection will be closed to both northbound and southbound Halton Road traffic. July twenty-third through August sixth, only northbound Halton Road traffic is permitted across the railroad tracks. Again, southbound through traffic will be rerouted at Glenview Drive. Local traffic to include Liberty carton, nurse assist, et cetera, will be allowed southbound on Halton Road past Glenview, however, not across the railroad tracks. And then on August seventh, both northbound and southbound Halton Road traffic will be allowed to resume through this intersection. So please visit the city's website at www.haltoncitytx.com. As the information for these traffic changes become known, the city staff will post the dates on the website. And that's our announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Uh, moving on now to the regular agenda. Agenda item number one is the Minutes, Consideration and or Action for Approval of the Minutes from the May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen council meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding these? Hey, seeing Nun, we are in line for a motion for approval. Councilmember Grow.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the me, for the meeting of May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval as our second. Councilmember, uh, Trum.
Man, got so long, second.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval in a second. If you would please, uh, signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving on to agenda item number two, RFQ, uh, number two oh one seven dash three one two dash double oh one Sanitary Sewer Master Plan. Mr. Van Newen, you is welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. On this item, it actually goes back to two thousand and eight. In that time period, Halton City has, quite a few cities in the area entered into agreements with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. And basically those agreements stipulated would, had basically a ten-year plan that cities would do certain types of maintenance on their sewer mains in order to reduce sanitary sewer overflows. Uh, we do have to provide an annual report to the TCEQ. I provide that in January. And for the most part, that report considers- and for the most part, that report consists of what we've done in the previous year. I think quite a few of you were here when we did the Spring Lake Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. The impetus for that project was, it was one of the items that the TCEQ and us agreed to do. Another item was to update, actually, well, I guess update is a good word, our sanitary sewer master plant. And in order to do that, we needed to hire an engineering firm. It's been a while since the city's gone out to hire an engineering firm, so what I did was I had the purchasing department issue a request for statements of qualifications to interested firms. We did receive four statements of qualifications. We set up an internal staff and that staff consisted, or a committee consisted of myself, the city engineer, the water and sewer superintendent, a member from the finance department and a member from utility billing. That way we'd have the input from other departments that, that are somewhat knowledgeable about utility billing in our sewer. From that committee meeting, they selected three of the four firms that they would like to further interview. Those three firms were Wade Trim, RJN Group and Freezer Nichols. Those interviews were conducted at the end of March and shortly thereafter, the committee narrowed it down that they thought the best firm for this project would be the RJN Group. Through, most of May, staff negotiated the final scope of the project and the dollar amount and that ended up being three, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and three dollars. And staff would make a recommendation that council award this project to RJN Group in that amount, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and three dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have. Additionally, from the RJN Group, their senior vice president, Hugh Kelso, is also in the audience and he's available to answer any questions that I stumble through.
Thank you, Mr. Van Newen Hughes. Council member Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Van Newen Hughes. Is this a new practice and procedure where you're putting together a committee to look at these?
In that, in a workshop that we had a few years ago, I sensed some concern from the city council on how engineering firms were picked and so I thought this might be a way where council might have more faiths, the word that comes to my mind, I don't know if that's the word I want to use, in that the way that we are picking engineering firms is fair and we are picking the most appropriate firm for the project at hand. So yes, it is new in recent terms.
I will agree with you, that's a poor choice of words because I have faith in you, but I, but I do appreciate the fact that you're doing this. I mean, this is a great idea because it puts more eyes on it and you have people from across the spectrum looking at, you know, these firms and all and, and, you know, I mean, we're all human and miss some, you know, there's some areas we probably miss or overlook and, you know, by putting together a committee like this, I do want to tell you, I appreciate it, I think it's a good concept and a good practice to move forward with. In saying that, have we worked with RJN before?
Yes, I think most recently was about six years ago and they analyzed a portion of the city and I think that's where the Spring Lake Sanitary Sewer main, where it was really decided the limits of that project.
Okay, so we do have past experience with them and it was good?
Very favorable, yes.
All right, good on that. And then one other thing, is this, on the fiscal impact, this is probably Jennifer question, is this Water and Sewer Fund capital projects or is?
Yes, it will be and Jennifer-
Out of that line?
Exactly.
Okay. That's all I have, no, and I do want to tell you, you know, I think it's a great, great policy or great concept that, you know, in doing that because it puts, I think it puts more eyes and less pressure on one or two people and I'm very proud of y'all for doing it that way.
Thanks, and I think that, you know, the finance department sees this project probably from a little bit different perspective than we do at Public Works as well as utility billing. They have a one-on-one relationship with the citizens out in the community. So they see things from a different perspective and I think that perspective needs to be acknowledged through the process.
Well, and I, so I guess, thanks to you or whoever put it in place, I want to tell you, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, council member Fowler. Council member Nunn.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with council member Fowler. I like having the subcommittees and I think what we were looking for before two years ago is just more transparency and that obviously, you know, helps and, and I think that's, that's really was our goal, just more transparency and this contributes to that, thank you.
Thank you, council member Nunn. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Mr. Van Newen Hughes? Hey, seeing none, excellent presentation, sir, thank you. We are in line for a motion. Did everybody jump in once? Council member Grow.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Romeo dash two zero one seven dash zero one eight dash one one for, let me get the, actually, the, the award of the engineering agreement, RFQ.
Thank you, sir.
Number two zero one seven dash three one two dash zero zero one.
Thank you, sir, we have a motion for approval. Council member Nunn? Thank you, council member Fowler.
That was for a second, Mayor, thank you.
We have a motion for approval in a second, if you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number three, resolution number R dash two oh one seven dash zero one eight dash one one. Again, Mr. Van Newen Hughes.
Well, I'm before you again, speaking about Mini Street Water Main. If you recall, on May fifteenth, y'all adopted a resolution recommending to Tarrant County that they award the project to, oh, sorry, to L.K.G. Resources in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, seventy-two dollars. Tarrant, or Tarrant County's distribution to Halton City for CDBG funds was a hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy cents. So that left a shortfall of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. We had anticipated this shortfall and in fact, in our CIP budgeted fifty thousand dollars to cover this shortfall well prior to bidding. However, Tarrant County is requesting that Halton City acknowledge formally that they will pay that shortfall in the resolution. This is something that they have not asked from us in the past, however, they're, I guess, they're concerned with an audit without that recognition that maybe their auditors might think that they're on the line for that dollar amount. So the best thing seems to be to repeal the resolution that y'all adopted on May fifteenth, adopt a new resolution, so the only thing that's really changed is that we're now formally acknowledging that we're pledging the eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. So there has been no change to the scope of the project, it's just that the resolution now formally acknowledges that we will pay the difference. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Van Newen Hughes. Are there any questions from the council for Mr. Van Newen Hughes? Council member Fowler.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, quick question. I own a lot on Mini Street, it's a vacant lot, but would it, since this is an appropriation of funds, Wayne, Mr. Olson, would it be best to go ahead and recuse myself on this?
The standard, Council member Fowler, is whether or not it's reasonably foreseeable that your vote on this matter would have an economic impact on your property outside the impact it has on the public in general. The call for you to make, if you think that it is foreseeable that this would impact your property values up or down, then you should recuse yourself from voting on it.
Up or down more than any other property?
More than other properties in the city, yeah. If it affects you, property that you own differently than it affects other properties in the community.
Would we still be able to vote on it without my vote having a quorum?
You would.
Okay.
The quorum's here, you would abstain if you felt uncomfortable voting on it, you abstain, but-
I don't necessarily feel uncomfortable, but I would, but I feel like it'd be better to go ahead and recuse myself.
Thank you, council member Fowler, and thank you for that advice, Mr. Olson. So with that being said, do we have any other question or comments from the council for Mr. Van Newen Hughes? Okay, we are in line for a motion. Council member Grow.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we repeal Resolution Romeo dash two zero one seven dash zero one five dash one one and approve, replace it with Resolution, I say Romeo dash two zero one seven dash zero one eight dash one one. So Tarrant County will feel, have the warm and fuzzies that we will cover the difference on the project.
Thank you, sir, did everybody get that? We are in line, we are in line for a second. Council member Nunn?
And that's for a second.
Okay, a motion for approval in a second, if everybody would please signify your votes. Motion passes for, for in favor with council member Fowler abstaining. Thank you, council. So moving on to the visitors and citizens forum, this is the time- Where? I didn't get the updated agenda, apparently we do have another agenda item, okay. Or, agenda item number four, ordinance number O dash two oh one seven dash O one six dash one five, Mr. French.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see.
I've got it, we're good.
CU zero zero eight seventeen is the application of Ernest Heschkoff on behalf of Baldonado Hernado to amend an existing conditional use permit for an auto dealership by the addition of an auto paint and body use in the M one industrial district located on tracks one F and one J, the John Acres Survey Abstract Twenty-four, being approximately one point eight six acres north of Catalpa Street and northwest of Airport Freeway, Frontage Road. This property having the address approximately of fifty-two thirteen Airport Freeway. The properties to the north, south and east are zoned industrial. The property to the west is SF one, single-family residential. The city's conference of land use plan designates the subject site as retail, office, service, commercial. The existing auto dealer use is typically considered a commercial service use. However, the auto paint and body use may be considered an industrial use that is not dependent upon drive-by traffic to attract customers. The auto paint and body shop use is compatible with the existing auto dealership, however, the existing building being constructed at the west property line and the intensity of the proposed use may pose concerns to the adjacent residential uses to the west. The legal notice regarding the public hearing was published in the May third, two thousand and seventeen Fort Worth Star Telegram. Notification was mailed to all property owners within two hundred feet on May first, two thousand and seventeen. Fifteen notices were, were notified, I'm sorry, fifteen property owners were notified. Of those notifications, we had one returned having no objections and being in favor and that was from Danny Vaught with the property at fifty-three oh one Airport Freeway. And we had one returned having objections from Deborah Deeslin at nineteen twelve Eden Avenue and we had one returned to sender. And that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions of the council.
Thank you, Mr. French. Council member Fowler, you have a question for Mr. French?
Quite a few, actually. Mr. French, Mr. Vaught's property is where, location, I know it's to the, is it the large tract or the one that's just beside it?
It is the fifty-three oh, let's see.
Fifty-three oh one?
Fifty-three oh one, yes.
That's correct, okay. Now, where's the proposed building that's, I understand that's, that's the existing building, but where are they proposing putting this paint and body shop?
Within the existing building.
So at the, at the end, though?
Here's the building footprint. And there's the tenant space for the paint and body shop.
Okay, and there's be some different questions for the applicant. One thing, the, part of the, in the analysis, part of the, the conditional use, I think, didn't allow for streamers. Why did they put streamers up? I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but-
That's a good question for the applicant.
Okay, and a auto body shop would typically fall under, our matrix would fall under what zoning classification?
It's, it's allowed by right in the industrial districts if it's, if the property is surrounded by industrial districts and not located on a major street.
Major thoroughfare.
Correct.
So it's fairly limited in where you can put a paint and body shop?
By right, but it's allowed through a conditional use permit approval from city council and, and-
Wherever.
Correct.
Okay, one other question. The, for the air quality and all, is there any, been anything proposed or shown in this application as far as how to capture any of the paint, any of the noise, any of that?
No, not, not that I'm here to present, the applicant may have some information on that, though.
Okay.
And the applicant's representative, Ernest Heschkoff, is here in the audience.
Okay, I'll, probably better to ask Mr. Heschkoff then. Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you, council member Fowler. Are there, are there any other questions from the council for Mr. French? Dr. Trum?
Mr. French, you say one of the resident opposed, or what the detail, what they said?
They didn't elaborate on what their objections were. The property's at nineteen twelve Eden Avenue and-
How far is it?
It, they're, they're not adjacent, they don't back up to the site, they're, the site further up here.
Okay. And, tell me again, P and Z, what kind of-
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't think I said that. The planning zoning commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Trum. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Justin? Council member Grow.
What's the current zoning in that area? I saw that you have the club as commercial, so what is it now? And I know there's a bunch of M two there. Okay, so M one, M one, and one, the single families, all the way down that side, yeah.
So this is our official zoning map, a portion of it, with the subject site zoned M one and the property to the south, east and north is also zoned M one and then to the west is single-family residential, SF one.
And the club wants to be commercial?
The conference of land use plan has the future land use map indicating that the subject site, the residences to the west and all property to the north, east and south be office, retail, service, commercial.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Grow. Council member Fowler, do you have more questions?
No, not currently, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. French answered it.
Council member Nunn?
Thank you, Mayor. The building itself that they're now occupying, is it insulated for noise or, what kind of a building structure is it?
That'd be a good question for the applicant, I don't have that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Justin?
One last, Mr. Mayor. Mr. French, that, the facility that's there, that's in the hashed area, that's the building and it's basically, go back to your plat, there you go. It's basically, is it not right at the property line, built right at the property line?
It is, yes.
So would, it was, it's legal, but it's non-conforming of our current standards?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, is, because you get into this, now you're getting into fire, fire code and all on firewalls and everything else on, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other question or comments from the council, we'll now open up the public hearing at seven thirty for anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item. Mr. Heschkoff, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ernest Heschkoff representing the juror on this re, conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ernest Hedgecote, representing Gerald on this re, conditional use permit. There was some concern of the property, what it is, is he, these are, Mr. Gerald has three car dealerships in, around the, this one here is not, is one, and he has one on twenty-eighth and one out on thirty-five, I believe. This will be just for his equipment only, and anyway, the cars that he, from all of his car lots, he'll be bringing in the ones that, from auctions and stuff, that he can repaint, repair, and clean up for his sale. They're not open to the public. And this is a, a paint booth that is, we, he also has, the exhaust goes up through the front. Exhaust sucks down through the bottom for the paint. There's several of these are in, in place right now. One's on Midway Road for Mr. Sturgeon's, where Mr. Sturgeon's warehouse is. Off of Midway Road, and then there's also one that I helped with over on Twenty-eighth Street, which is just not off of the Beach Street there. Anyway, after the council meeting, at the planning and zoning meeting, there was some discussion about the exhaust and everything. So Gerald told me that he has contacted and contracted with a company called Worldwide Recycling Company, and what they will do, they bring all the filters in, these, all of this exhaust is filtered out with, with filters. And they furnish the filters, and they also remove all of the excess paint and everything. This building is a CMU block wall, concrete. And there's, I think, there's close to ten units up and down this building. And he has his offices in the front of the building there on Capota. And the rest of it is vacant right now. He has plans for enlarging it later on. But this is one of the, the overhead door units, and it's, I think it's twenty-five feet wide and fifty feet deep. And the, the unit itself is only about fourteen by twenty or something like that. It's not, not a very big unit at all. And it'll fit in there real well. And, but the thing that he was concerned about was making sure that we got rid of the filter. The filters would, after they filter it, every, every time they use the paint booth, they'll get new filters, and they put them in. And then this, they take them out and recycle them and do whatever the EECQ and everybody. There's a lot of regulation involved with the paint booth. And the fire department makes annual visits and inspections on it, the fire department here in Holton City. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. But I don't know about the, the, the flags. I remember we said we wasn't going to have them, but I haven't talked to him about that. I didn't, didn't notice that they were there. But I'll ask him when, he's out of the country right now. He'd be here today.
Thank you, Mr. Hedgecote. Councilmember Fowler?
Okay, Mr. Hedgecote, real quick. Okay, so the, the flags is one issue. We, we gave a conditional use on this. Why did he not apply for this at the same time he applied for the the previous conditional use? Cause I think we saw this maybe six months or a year ago?
No, more like, more like three years.
Was it that long? How time flies.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yes, sir.
And we got a conditional use permit for the auto sales.
Right.
Trucks. And then we also got one for a future inspection station down there, where he can inspect his own cars for use, and he hasn't been able to, hadn't seen the, the use of that yet. So, but that's, was a conditional use that we got approved back in fourteen, two thousand fourteen, when we got the auto sales.
And I apologize.
The reason this was done is he, I assume he just now getting the money to pull it all together and, and use it. And he's spending money on having these cars used, these, these other car dealers, I mean, the other paint and body shops. And now he can do his own, save himself from having to spend extra money.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. I just, and I, and I don't want to, I'm not, not here to try to necessarily put the kibosh on it, but you know, there's some things that I'm concerned with. You have residents that are behind it, and we still have to protect the integrity of that. We had a conditional use that we approved as a council, cause I mean, I remember we, I was on here when we voted on it, and we approved all of those things. You know, we approved his approach and some different things that he needed, he asked to be done differently. One of the things was, we didn't want streamers or streamers. I'm hesitant or a little bit reluctant to approve this tonight, just because I, you know, there's some things and questions that I feel like need to be answered. Is this strictly for his own use?
Yes.
For sure. I, well, I understand, but I, I, you're his representative, but I would like to hear that from him, and I would like to be written into the, into the regs if we, you know, if we do decide to approve this. Hours of operation, you know, I don't want, you know, we, you've got a building that's, that's legal, but it's non-conforming, and you know and understand that. That's, it's pushed right up against the residences, and you know, we have to, we have to respect that, that, you know.
Yes, sir.
That, take that into consideration. And, you know, you, you want to make sure that this stays with that, that occupant only. Because, you know, it, it's not going to do us any good to approve this, and then Mr., you know, Mr. Gerald decides to, you know, retire in two years and then put a body shop down there. That's not what we're, you know. So there's some things that I think that we really need to, to give it in fairness, I don't, I, the paint booth, I think now that they've made a lot of advances in, in the, the way that, like you said, the way that they're done, I don't feel like that that's, that that's necessarily a problem. It's just the insundry things that go with it that I think we need to take into consideration before we just approve a conditional use of a, you know, something that that, that's that intense, that's an industrial use, right up against residences.
I'll have to ask Justin this, but does the conditional use travel with the property, or is it? It will be there. If he sells the property, then they have to get a new conditional use permit?
The conditional use permit does carry on with the new property ownership, as does any stipulations with the approval of that conditional use permit.
Oh, okay. Well, right now Gerald's out of the country, and he'll be out of the country for probably another month. So it would be, he, if, if y'all see fit not to let us have it today, then it'll be probably in July sometime before he could be back, back in the country. And as far as residential property, these lots that are up there are over about two hundred feet deep. And the lots are all facing up real close to the, the Eden Drive there. So there's not a, there's a big vacant spot there. It's not like these houses are going to be right in the, the property. And, we are on the property line, I understand that. But as far as affecting the homeowners and the property, it should not have any effect at all with the filter system that we've got.
Well, and I, and I'm not as concerned about that as I am necessarily, maybe DA's running and body work being done. And, you know, I mean, I understand, and I can appreciate the depth of the lots, cause we have a, you know, a situation on Broadway where we have deep lots, and we have some mechanical use, and there's, there's been a running battle for the last four or five years that I've had the opportunity to deal with. And, you know, I think some of staff's had the opportunity to deal with, with residents abutting of, you know, a more intense use like this. So, you know, I just want to be sure that we give it, you know, we give this thing, you know, an opportunity. Cause I, I would like Mr., you know, he's done a nice job on the property and all, and I would like for them to be successful and be able to, you know, meet the needs that they have here in our community, but I, I still feel like we need to figure out some things, hours of operation and all that are very specific that, that allow us to, you know, be in good conscience to both the citizens and the, the business owner.
I think his current hours of operation are like eight o'clock till six o'clock, or five thirty, six o'clock, just a regular eight to five type operation, and it don't nighttime work. And like I say, all of this is for his own utility, the used car dealers that he has. When he goes to the auction market, he says they come back with scratches and dents and bings. And that he need, and rather than spend money with somebody else, he can do it himself with his own people.
And I, and I understand, and I appreciate that, and I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but what I have to respect is the fact that it's Gerald's today, and it may be Joe's tomorrow. And if it's Joe's tomorrow, Joe may not recognize the same.
He's been in business for, for over twenty years as a car dealership and all.
You know, at some point, we all retire and do something different, you know.
Well, I don't think he has that in mind, but yeah, he, like I say, he's been a good neighbor with the, the neighbors and the people, and he wants to be, stay in Holton City. He's, he's brought his business in, and I'll make sure that the flags get taken down.
But then that may not even necessarily be a problem. It's just, you know, I think.
I do remember the flag situation, but I'd forgotten about it.
And we'd ask that that not, not take place, but like I say, I don't necessarily want to kill it. I want to give it, you know, I want, I want to be fair to it, but I don't know if, if, you know, I would feel more comfortable if he were able to be here. Is it a situation that we could set this for the last meeting in July, and would he be here if, if that were possibly be the motion?
I, I don't know exactly when he'll be back. He just told me he'd be, he, he won't be back this month. So I don't know if he'll be, when he'll be back for sure.
This month, of June, so he should be back.
If he'll come back in July sometime, I guess. Like I say, he's out of the country completely. I told, I've got, I have arrangements for somebody to come, if y'all approve tonight, to come and be here next week to represent it. Cause I'm going to be out of town next week. And so I got Mr. Pulisca to come and meet any questions you might have next week.
Well, I, I just feel more, you know, I understand that, you know, that, you know, the owner has a representative, the applicant has a representative. But I, I feel like that this is something that I would like, feel more comfortable with coming from the applicant. You know, if he would feel like, you know, giving him the opportunity to come here in the first part of July or the first meeting in July. I personally would feel more comfortable with that, but that's just me.
Well, we would respectfully ask that you let us have this tonight, and we'd be glad to do, you put any stipulations that you like on, and I'll make sure that you handle them.
Yes, sir.
But just to get things moving and not to delay it any longer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hedgecote from the council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item? This is, this is agenda item number four. Okay, seeing that, I'll now close the public hearing at seven forty-four, and we are now in line for motion. Councilmember Fowler?
Mr. Mayor, it's just, it's my opinion that, you know, I'd like, like I said previously, I'd like to give this fairness and, and to the applicant and to the, you know, the people in that area also that are residents. I personally feel like that it would maybe be in our best interest to delay this or table it until the first meeting in July, which date specific would be what, Mr. Camacho?
July tenth. Okay, we have a motion for table till July tenth. Justin, when was this before our, well, actually, this was before the P and Z, right?
Yes.
Okay, when was it before then?
That was the June twenty-third meeting. I'm sorry.
May twenty-third?
I'm sorry, yes, May twenty-third.
Yes. Councilmember Watkins, you're our liaison to that board. Do you recall any of the conversation that was had regarding this agenda item?
It seemed pretty simple, I think. What I remember of it. I, I don't, I didn't see any problems. There went in a whole lot of discussion over it. And let me ask you a question. This is the first reading. What's to keep us from approving on the first reading? Because if I'm understanding Mr. Fowler correctly, if he gets the confirmation from the property owner that he's going to do the due diligence on the the fumes and this, that, and the other, and the flags and things, is, what's to keep us from? Approving it on the first reading? We do that all the time. So if there's any changes, instead of waiting until July to even have the first reading, and then have to have the second reading.
Are you comfortable with hours of operation and things like that? Are you comfortable with specifying hours of operation? I, I would just like to give the applicant an opportunity to say what time, you know, they feel like they're going to do it. I, I just feel like that's coming from the applicant, not a representative.
I can't remember actually whether the hours of operation were discussed. Do you recall whether hours of operation were discussed? See, I, I think all that was discussed at the.
Well, my, my whole deal is, Mr. Watkins, as Mr. French said, if a conditional use permit carries to the next, the next property owner, then we're virtually might as well the things that we do, if just, I understand Mr. Gerald may plan on working another twenty years, but at some point, that can be a body shop.
Well, Mr. French also said that it will go with the, the, the motion would include all of the stipulations that we make will go with the, with it as well. Is that true? So I mean, if we say, which I think, I think we're both saying the same thing, if, if, if the, if the applicant himself comes in and says, here's my hours, and here's what I'm going to do, and it all, it's all in the motion.
I'm, I'm not as opposed to it at that point, but it's difficult for me to, to ask someone to operate during certain hours. He may want to operate from, you know, seven thirty to five thirty, and we say from nine to five.
Well, that, that's why I say, excuse me, excuse me. That's what, what I'm saying is, if we, if we stipulate the hours and everything in your, in the, in your motion on the first reading. All I'm saying is, if we wait till the middle of July, and if he, what if he's not back at the first meeting? That's, it's two or three weeks. So we actually may look at the second meeting in July, and it just looks like to me we're prolonging. If we believe that it's all going to be handled in the motion. I don't, I, I, I'm just asking. I'm saying that we have approved things before on the first reading and, and, and changed some of the things. If on the first, if on the first reading, we stipulate what the hours are.
So when do you propose the second reading?
I would say that, I would say the first meeting, well, I don't know, we don't know when he's going to be back. It would be nice to say the first meeting in July, but we're not going to have, we're going to have next week's meeting, and then we're not going to have one for three weeks.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if you start at that point, then, then you're talking about late July or maybe August.
But you're talking about, you're really talking about two weeks difference, cause if, if the applicant's back the first of July, and they're at the July the tenth meeting, that's first reading and second reading is the second meeting in July, which is, would be the twenty-fourth. That's all I'm saying.
Well, you, you've made your motion, and I'll probably approve your motion. I would just say, I would prefer, personally, I would prefer to approve it on the first reading, stipulate your hours, and whatever else it is you want to stipulate. And if it comes to the second reading and the person doesn't agree with all that, we don't pass it on the second reading. You know what you, you know what you want him to do.
Well, it's not, I'm just trying to take, I'm just trying to take these things into consideration, because once you approve this stuff, then it can, if he decides to sell tomorrow, and somebody comes in and offers him, you know, a quality auto body comes in and offers him, you know, money, and he decides he wants to do it, then it can be an automotive, auto body shop.
But not if you've stipulated all that in your motion, I believe.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's an opinion. That's, I've, I've had some opinions. I don't, or this isn't it.
I tend to, I tend to agree with Councilmember Fowler. It's best to get clarity before we start stip, putting stipulations in our motions, when we don't. Clarity on the unknown.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of, because I wasn't here for when the conditional use permit was, was put in place the first time. And the fact that there are streamers up there, obviously, the owner of that property doesn't really care what we say up here. Because he's just going to do whatever he wants. And so. he's just going to do whatever he wants, and so I would personally like to hear from the owner, so he can talk about it. I hope code enforcement rise, rolls out there tomorrow and starts enforcing some of these stipulations that we put on these conditional uses.
We still have a motion on the floor, which is to table it until the Ju, July tenth meeting. Councilmember Rowe?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion for, to table it, and we have a second. Council, would please signify your votes. Motion passes to table it until the January, I'm sorry, July tenth meeting, July tenth. Okay, moving forward now is the Visitors and Citizens Forum. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, moving on to resignation of board members. I do have one, Myrna Del Rosso from the Housing Authority. If you would please ratify her resignation, we should have it in our packets. Okay, thank you for that. I didn't see any others, so no other resignations, any appointments or reappointments? Seeing none, okay. We will now convene into executive session pursuant to five fifty-one oh seven one and oh seven two, the Texas Government Code, at seven, what time is that, seven fifty-four?